Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mia Chow?
Here.
Ms. Chun? Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Ms. Delay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Seven present.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome the many of the public school staff and teachers who are here in the chamber tonight, and I want to welcome everyone at home who is watching the meeting tonight. We apologize for the delayed meeting. We had the exec session earlier, and it took some time to discuss issues, and we ran out of time, and that would lead me to the next item on the agenda. We are not able to introduce the interim chief school officer yet. That item has been tabled. We've got to discuss that later on after the regular meeting, but I understand that some of the members in the chamber here are to speak on the issues, so I'm going to allow, since you spent the time to come speak on the issues, we're going to allow anyone who's interested in speaking on this item. You are welcome to speak on this issue. Is that right now, Madam Secretary?
It was under special order business, yes.
Okay, so if you could call the first speaker?
Joyce Serrano.
My name is Joyce Serrano. We're going to defer, a couple of us are going to defer just in times to save time, you know, in the, for the chambers, so if we wanted to skip, I was going to defer my time to one of the other next candidate in line, okay? Thank you.
And just to let you know, while we do have time, we were delayed just because of an earlier meeting, but if you would like to speak, if you still would like to speak, please do so.
Ginger Coleman. Christian Labrie. Christian Labrie.
Hi, how are you all? My name's Christian Labrie, and I'm the instrumental music teacher at The Pine. This is my first year of teaching since graduating college in 2022, and I was hired here to begin a band program from ground zero. It's a type of job that could easily have become overwhelming, exhausting, and pushed me out of teaching altogether. To be honest, when I graduated, there was still a doubt in my mind that teaching as a whole wasn't really my calling. As you can tell, though, I'm still here, and so much of that is because of Wendy. Anyone could tell you that Wendy is hardworking, student-focused, and dedicated to ensuring success for everyone around her. When the band was going on a trip to perform and details changed last minute, she helped brainstorm, pivot, and execute our solution so quickly that the students would still get the best experience possible, which they did, by the way. To me, though, one of her most compelling traits is her ability to thoroughly visualize and efficiently enact visions for the future. She believes that greater access and diversity in arts programming will lead to increased student success, and she has taken so many action steps to get there, including hiring our new dance teacher and myself, incorporating arts integration techniques into core academic classrooms, and appropriating funding to so many new arts activities for students, like our Grady's Trip with the band this year, where she was a chaperone, by the way. As a result of these efforts, chronic absences were cut down dramatically, with more students eager to come to school and stay every day. She knows what students need and is determined to get there through empathy, collaboration, and effective change. Again, I've only been here for a year, but in just that year alone, I've observed all of the amazing things that I've mentioned so far and so much more. Wendy is truly special and talented educator, administrator, and human being. I can't wait to see her achieve everything she envisions. Thank you.
Beth Trepathy.
Hi, my name's Beth Trepathy, 30 Talbot Street in Lowell, and I'm also a member of the School Site Council at The Pine Arts School, and I hope it's okay I have with me two of my colleagues on the School Site Council, two fellow parents with me. If I can defer to them, I'm just going to briefly say how much I support the superintendent selection for this chief school officer of interim position, and it is incredibly important that the superintendent is allowed to select the candidates that he needs to build his team to be successful this year and that he has a trusted team and trusted staff members. You're going to hear wonderful comments about Wendy's work here at The Pine. My two kids go to The Pine, and I think it's incredibly important that we signal to everybody that we have a school committee in the city that supports our superintendent and supports the choices our superintendent and our leadership team makes, and I will defer to my colleagues here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hamza Arash, and I'm a parent of one of my kids that go to Pine Arts, as well as a member of the School Site Council. As a parent for a nine-year-old that has been at The Pine since preschool and still, under Mrs. Robers' leadership, I observe many characteristics, positive ones, obviously, starting from constant updates and commitment and communications to the parents, caring about the student's success for inclusion and diversity as well, by improving the school metrics and recognizing the staff and the students for their achievements. As a school council member for the school for almost two years, I have observed an exceptional organization to the budget and to the school issues, and a very strong advocate and caring for the student-staff by improving the educational tools and always finding ways to save the city and the school money or budgets, but not cutting corners, but always choosing the best for school, students, and staff. As a parent and a member of the School Site Council, I can't be more grateful for Mrs. Robers' work. She's been at the school, as you are aware, for more than 11 years, and she has showed dedication and a hard work and a great leadership at what she does, and I'm sure she's going to be great and perfect at whatever role she chooses in the future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Starcevic. I've been on the School Site, I've been on the School Site Council since, I think, 2019. I have three middle schoolers at The Pine who all started in pre-K, so we've all experienced The Pine from the very beginning, and we're very fortunate for that. I want to talk about the changes I've seen at The Pine and why I think that Mrs. Robers' special set of skills is actually quite right for the appointment that she's considered for right now. When we first started, we had a drama program, and that was sort of the only thing that set The Pine apart, and it is very different today. And even then, with the children I had, I thought, that's going to be key. I'm very glad that we started, even with that. It started out as a great opportunity, and it has grown into so much more because Mrs. Robers had a vision. Even in the beginning, she had a vision for what she wanted The Pine to be and how she wanted arts to be integrated into the entire curriculum, and the commitment to that vision is what made it work, along with her resourcefulness, and these three things, I feel like, are connected, and that's why it actually worked. Because every time she had an opportunity to make a change, she was focused on that goal and that vision, and she was able to leverage her whatever resources she could find to actually meet that goal. So the focus and the commitment to this vision is something that made all the difference, in my mind, and I think that her passion for the arts, of course, drove really so much of it, but I do feel that her skills could be transferred to the other principals in realizing the potential for their schools. I feel like her approach to realizing her vision is really what would translate very well, and I'm very excited about the opportunity for all the other principals to learn from what The Pine has been able to do. So I want to thank Mrs. Robers for her great commitment to The Pine. I would be very sad to lose her, but I'd be very happy for the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Audrey Crawford.
Good evening. My name is Audrey Crawford Rivera, and I am here to show support for the hiring of Wendy Crocker Robers as interim chief principal officer. I've worked in the Lowell public school system in many capacities. I was a clerk, I was a middle school tutor, I was a classroom teacher, and in my current position as math coach at The Pine for nine years, and as a union rep for the, been at The Pine for 11, and a union rep for nine years. I have a long history and a deep connection with the Pine Arts Magnet. I began volunteering at the arts when it was at the old Arts Magnet downtown in the 90s, and upon my return from theater school at NYU, I came back looking for a job and started working for the Lowell Public Schools. My mom was the secretary at the Pine Arts at the time, and, sorry, I lost my space. I've had family that attended the Pine Arts School pre-K to eight. My daughter attended the Pine Arts, pre-K to three, until we moved, and my first long-term position was teaching grade seventh, eighth math at the Pine Arts before Wendy was principal. When I was working at the Stoklosa, Wendy became principal, and I remember my mom saying, "She is good. She's really good. She's going to do great things here." As a school secretary, you know things most people don't. And when I was hired as a math coach, I got to finally see firsthand how amazing Wendy is at her job. Wendy approaches every situation thoughtfully and intelligently, but more importantly, with our staff and students' best interests in mind. She has a clear vision for putting the arts back in the Pine Arts Magnet, and it has succeeded in doing so, making changes to the schedule, offering dance, band, costuming, and other electives that might not be accessible for our students in Lowell. I wish my child had the opportunity to attend the courses that she is now offering here at The Pine. Ensuring equitable access and the opportunity for quality education in a safe and inclusive environment where students can not only learn but be creative too is Wendy's objective. Being a former Lowellian, a parent who has had children at the Lowell, in the Lowell Public Schools and at The Pine, as a staff member before she worked at The Pine and after, as a union rep, I have a unique perspective. In my opinion, Wendy is the best principal in Lowell. She has high expectations of her staff, students, and parents and guardians as well. Wendy holds everyone accountable, and for some, that can be difficult, but I assure you that she holds herself to an even higher standard, and she can be even harder on herself than she is on anybody else. Superintendent Skinner is not an outsider. He knows what goes on in the Lowell Public Schools. He's been a principal of a high-performing school, and he recognizes the leadership skills that Wendy possesses. If you put your trust in Liam Skinner as interim superintendent, then you should also trust him to make the right choice for interim chief principal officer, which is Wendy Crocker Robers.
Audrey Wentworth.
Good evening. My name's Audrey Wentworth, and I'm 13 years old. I started at the Pine Arts as a preschooler nine years ago. My parents were drawn to this school because of The Pine's reputation for its art, music, and drama programs. From the beginning, Ms. Robers has been a strong supporter of all the Pine Arts students and has done a lot to improve the arts programs offered at The Pine. Her enthusiasm and passion were infectious. For example, her vision to build a dance studio, which we've been all waiting for, has become a reality, and thanks to Ms. Robers' dream and the hard work of the theater director, Mr. Rose, we were able to stage a successful two-act production of Beauty and the Beast, which I was honored to play the role of Gaston and be a part of a large and lively ensemble cast. It's been my experience that Ms. Robers makes sure that we are all exceeding not only the arts but academics and athletics, offering the ability to be well-rounded students. The curriculum that Pine follows provides hands-on activities for students that understand the unit in a different way, such as myself. I understand things on the board, but when I can perceive things in person, I'm able to get a way better understanding of what we are learning exactly. We're all very proud of the girls' basketball team for coming in first place this year, and Ms. Robers was cheering on the team as one of their biggest supporters. And although she will be greatly missed by the Pine Arts community, we will know that whatever path she leads, success will follow. Thank you, Ms. Robers, for all you've done for your students at the school. We wish you luck. Thank you.
Caitlin Edwards.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Edwards. I'm a Lowell resident and a parent, as well as a teacher at Pine Arts Magnet School. I'm here today in support of Wendy Robers' promotion to chief schools officer. Ms. Robers has my full support and confidence in taking on this new role. She has been the most equitable, influential, and supportive principal I've had the pleasure of working with. She has created and fostered a positive school culture with open lines of communication and strong relationships. She spends her time with staff encouraging and offering constructive feedback. She sees the potential of her staff as limitless and encourages professional growth. As a parent and resident of Lowell, I'm excited at the prospect of Ms. Robers in this new role. She holds high expectations for her staff and provides them with the resources, support, and coaching needed to be successful. She's worn many hats in education and is a vast resource in herself for parents and students in the community. I value the importance of her strong leadership and its influence on the success of our school district. I see the impact that she has on the school community at Pine and know how beneficial her impact will be on the entire Lowell community. As a teacher at Pine Arts, I can't say enough wonderful things about where I work and spend my time. As a first-year teacher in a new district, it can be challenging. This past year, this past school year teaching at Pine Arts has been the most rewarding experience. Restorative practices, project-based learning, arts integration, and arts learning are at the heart of engaging students and offering a variety of ways to construct and demonstrate understanding. This is everything plus more that takes place daily at The Pine. With every bump in the road, Ms. Robers was there with an ear to listen and already working through a few strategies off her head on how she can help. Her positive feedback and guidance throughout the year has been invaluable. Under her leadership, I have felt valued, respected, and encouraged, which has helped me become the best version of myself to show up each day for my students. Her success in her current role demonstrates her readiness for greater responsibility and challenges. Ms. Robers' method of providing direction, implementing plans, and motivating people is unmatched. She's a treasured asset at our school and a hard one to give up. With 12 years of experience in the district, expertise on performance management, and a data-driven approach, I cannot think of a better person suited for the role of chief schools officer. I'm confident in her ability to excel in the role of chief schools officer, and I advocate for positive change within the district. Thank you.
Candace Laurent.
Good evening. I'm here for two reasons tonight. The first one is to show my support for Wendy. The next is to read a letter from Elizabeth McDonald, who was unable to attend tonight. I am writing in support of Wendy Crocker Robers for interim chief of schools officer. I'm speaking as both a parent and a staff member at The Pine. I am honored to have known Wendy for the past seven years. During those seven years, I've been lucky to have two of my three children graduate from The Pine School, and one that is currently going into the fifth grade at The Pine. I cannot express how pleased we are to be a part of the Pine community. Wendy has created this strong community, hiring excellent educators that keep the students engaged and thriving throughout the school day, providing them a safe environment to learn and grow as individuals. These students are her own children to her. She tries her best to support and advocate for each of them based on their own personal needs. She has worked endlessly to build The Pine Arts, to offer incredible opportunities for students to not only excel academically, but to also flourish in extracurricular activities, whether it be exciting new programs, sports, and clubs, but most recently, the endless opportunities in the arts. She has given these students the opportunity of a lifetime to try new and exciting things that they otherwise may not have had the opportunity to try: playing a musical instrument, performing extraordinary productions, creating outstanding pieces of art, all of which have provided the students to face new avenues, build their confidence, giving them the power to succeed in something other than academics. As a parent, these are the goals we want for our children: to feel a part of something and to know people care. This sense of caring is why our PTO at The Pine is so involved and thrilled to have a principal that listens and supports the parents' visions. These are just some of the traits Wendy could bring to the surrounding community as a whole. Being the school nurse at The Pine for the past five years, Wendy made me feel welcome from day one, providing me with guidance and words of wisdom while being kind and friendly, made coming into work every day easy. She brings a peace of mind just knowing she's in the building. COVID was a very difficult time with lots of unknowns and demanding changes. Wendy made this time tolerable. As a healthcare professional, I knew the challenges that we would face, knowing I had her by my side, helped immensely, and I'll always be grateful. Being able to work with Wendy daily, I get to see firsthand how amazing she is as a leader. Her dedication, hard work, and knowledge for the job is astonishing. She makes rounds throughout the day, letting her staff know she's there if they need her. She's available to help support her staff no matter what time of day or night it is. She has a confidence that makes people want to be better, to do better. She empowers her staff as she does her students, all while holding them accountable for their actions and expectations. These accountabilities are what makes whether it be an administrator, director, or manager, difficult to please everyone. From what I have seen, Wendy always follows protocols, policies, and standards with the utmost respect, and as I can only speak for myself, we can all witness that others agree just by seeing the support she has at The Pine. I know Wendy would be a huge asset to the city of Lowell. She would help enhance each school for the better, giving support and guidance to help bring equity to all the schools in Lowell to ensure equality. For that is what the students in the city deserve.
Madam Secretary, no other speaker?
That concludes our speakers.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight to speak on behalf of Ms. Crocker Robers. The insights that you provide tonight is very helpful to maybe some of the committee members that may not be having contact with Ms. Crocker Robers before, so your comments, your experience with her has been greatly helpful. It sounds like Wendy's a special person, a wonderful person, and a good leader, and that's why you have so many support here tonight. We will take up this issue later on after the regular meeting. For now, we just want to thank you all for coming to the meeting tonight. Thank you. We now will proceed on to the next item on the agenda, which are the minutes. We're going to just maybe take a minute break, so if anybody would like to leave, they can leave the meeting. We are now continuing with the meeting items left on the agenda. Section four are the minutes. Need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of June 21, 2023, and the special meetings of June 24, 2023, and June 28, 2023, and to place them on file by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Doherty, on Face the Eye, post a note, eyes have it. Motion is carried. The next line item, the permission to enter, 5.1, permission to enter July 19, 2023. Any comment or questions by any of the committee members? Any comments on the permission to enter? Ms. Doherty?
I just wanted an update on the translation proposal for Language Bridge. Is that a new translation company? And $175,000, how does that compare to what we've been spending on translation services?
Mr. Superintendent?
Ms. Turner?
So we actually have a budget of $250,000, but what we did is put $175,000 on the PTE for this particular company, because often the companies are not able to provide all of the services due to a staff shortage, so what we would like to do is leave some funding available for the smaller translation companies in case we need it, but this is, this is actually less than what the budget is. So is that your question, 175 versus the 250?
Yes, and is this a new company we've been using for translation, or we're just giving them less this year to leave some funding for smaller translation services?
I believe this is a new company from the last year. We were using Bay State at one point. They actually went over their budget, so we have no idea of the services they provide until they bill us, so they went over their contracted amount, which means they have bills that the city will not pay, so we cannot work with Bay State. So yes, we do have, we did another company last year, but they weren't able to provide us the level of service that this company is promising to be able to offer, so this is why we're going with the newer company.
Any other comments or questions on the permission to enter? Here none. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Del Rossi. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson? Seven yeses.
The next line item is 5.2, contract approval of forward interim superintendent, Mr. William Liam Skinner. Any comments or questions by the committee member, Ms. Thompson?
I just want clarity. Is A, 1A, R, 1A, and 1C the same thing? Because it feels redundant as I'm looking at it, and I just want to make sure for clarity's sake that it's the same information. So I'm not sure if this is Dr. Hall's question.
Will Mr. Superintendent to Dr. Hall?
Sure, yes. So I don't believe they are redundant. Paragraph two is extended, so the base contract goes another two years, and then C basically goes over a condition that may occur and what will result if it does occur.
Any other questions or comments? Here none. Need a motion to approve the contract for the interim superintendent, Mr. William Liam Skinner, by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lay. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Seven yeses approved.
The next line item is the contract approval for the interim chief schools officer Wendy Crocker Robers, and as we discussed earlier, this is tabled to the discussion after the regular meeting. We don't need to do anything during this regular meeting. We now move to section six on the agenda, which are the motions. 6.1 is a motion by Mr. Lay requesting that the superintendent request that the city have all school crosswalks repainted before schools reopen, and that parks and playgrounds near schools be clean and safe for students' returns, second by Ms. Thompson. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two parts in here, well, it's all about safety, Mr. Mayor. So before school starts, it would be great to have all the crosswalk guards and crosswalks around the school be painted. That way, it's for the safety for the students, and for the playgrounds near the school, as well as playgrounds in the city. Kids are playing right now. They spend their time outside playing. Sometimes you could see rocks on the courts. You see tree branches, so I just want the city to be mindful about it and keep our students safe.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes, this is a subject that I've been very
Yes, this is a subject that I've been very concerned about, especially at the McAuliffe and the Robinson School areas, that people slow down when they're driving around that area. And I feel like it's not really taken seriously. But I do believe we need to bring some cognizance and awareness overall to what's, that this is a school zone. And whether it's painting the sidewalks or even a crossing guard at times, attention needs to be brought to these areas. So thank you to my colleague for bringing this up.
No other comments or questions. On favor, see I post a note, I have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 6.2. This is the only motion we have for tonight. Just turning my page, I was jumping ahead of myself. The next section is the subcommittees. 7.1 is the report of the meeting of Thursday, July 13th, 2023. Ms. Mon is the chairperson. Any report, Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The meeting did take place on July 13th. Present were members of the subcommittee, myself, Ms. De Rossi, Ms. Delay, and we had from the school department, Dr. Hall, Ms. Turner, Ms. Phillips and Ms. Van Thiel from our early education department. What I would recommend with the indulgence of the mayor and my colleagues, we did vote on a number of job descriptions. They are included in the agenda later on. So if we could take those out of order, perhaps we could accomplish both the report and voting on all the positions one by one and get that all done at once, if that's amenable to everybody. So it begins with item 9.5 and goes through item 9.9.
So request by Ms. Mon to take line items 9.5 through 9.9 out of order to discuss within the subcommittee report. Let me briefly, second by Ms. Thompson. Let me just read this line item real quick. 9.5, approval of job description and permission to post decoupling of early childhood coordinator and Cardinal O'Connell school supervisor. 9.6, approval of job description and permission to post cafeteria generalist. 9.7, approval of job description and permission to post food truck and cook for food truck. 9.8, approval of job description and permission to post lead security guard, lead flex block teacher and lead Latin lyceum teacher. And 9.9 is approval of job description and permission to post assistant data administrator. Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So what I'd recommend is we can go through, I can offer a brief description of each one of these positions and the thought process behind the subcommittee supporting them. And then I would say at the end of our report, if we can take one vote to approve all the job descriptions, we can do that all at once. But I would say certainly to my colleagues and anyone else, if you have any questions as we go through about any individual position, please, please just let me know you can ask the question. First was moving forward to separate what has been a combined position for the last several years. So that would be, we would be reestablishing the early childhood coordinator position and the supervisor of the Cardinal O'Connell School position. That's been combined into one position for the last few years, recognizing that both those activities require a full-time position. So the subcommittee had approved job description, both for the early childhood coordinator as well as for the Cardinal School supervisor. So that's two separate positions. The next position that we discussed, so I can go in order, was the position of a generalist to focus on cafeteria operations. This would be an HR position, but it would be focused entirely on cafeteria staff. So it would both kind of improve our ability to do recruiting and management of all those staff members, would also take part in scheduling. So the, I'm sorry, I'm going back and forth between the two of them. But so that was a request that came from the administration to better manage our cafeteria workers. It also is able to be paid for from the revolving account, so it won't be charged against Chapter 70 as we go through. Next two positions were to staff a new food truck that has been, Aramark has brought online for us. It requires both a driver and a cook for the food truck to be operational. And it's going to allow us the opportunity to bring the truck to different events, to different school sites. We'll be able to use it for special events at our schools. Also be able to use it at Colley Stadium when there are sports activities going on there. So it really is a matter of bringing on these individuals. They will be part of the kind of cafeteria team, but it's two new positions that would be specifically supporting the food truck and the work that that would be doing. Next would be the approval of three lead teacher positions at Lowell High School. This was a recommendation that came from the high school. So looking at, the first was a lead security guard position, offering the opportunity for Mr. Fiatto and his team to have one security guard who will be taking a lead role in managing the security at the high school. Also, a new position of the lead flex block teachers. These are a block of time within the school day at Lowell High School where a number of different teachers are offering specialized programming in a lot of different areas for our students. And this would allow us to name one of those individuals as the lead who would help in the coordination of that, that new opportunity for students. I believe last year was the first year we did that. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Was last year the first year we did the flex block? Okay, so this will be moving into its second year. We'll be adding that additional support. And then finally, a lead teacher within the Latin Lyceum, again, giving them some additional responsibilities as one of the teachers within the lyceum to be able to support those students in the activities of the lyceum. And then our final one was job description, permission to post for an assistant data administrator. Just looking at this one, this is a new position that will be coming into the purview of the, I believe, chief schools officer, who's the one managing this position. And I would say this was, this had to do with, you know, again, tracking of data, getting data in formats that can be used by the district to make decisions. I would defer, if anyone would like to define that better than I am, the notes here. Just kind of giving us the broad strokes, but if there are specifics to the position, it might be great for everybody to hear that. I'd say that to the superintendent.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. It happens that it's, it's an opportune moment for this job posting because we have a retirement in the data office. And so it's not a full new cost. It's approximately a $10,000 cost. The position that's being reduced has long since been considered to warrant more duties. And so this is an opportunity to add more duties and create a new job description. The actual cost because of the resignation is approximately $10,000.
So it'll be replacing the previous position?
Thank you, yes.
Perfect. So I believe that those are all the job descriptions that were presented to the subcommittee. The subcommittee on each, on each one of these items did vote to approve and to recommend to the full school committee their votes to approve as well. So I would submit that as a report of progress from the subcommittee. And I would make a motion for the full school committee to consider all six positions, I think? Maybe more than that, nine, with the lead teachers, in one motion to approve them all at once.
Three, four, five, five positions. Before... One, two, three, four. Okay. Before, took a second to take a vote on all the jobs. Any other comments or questions on the either subcommittee report or the jobs posting? Here none. Motion by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Doherty. This is the vote on the job postings as discussed. To move forward for a vote and appear under new business. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
And that completes the second report. Need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Thompson, on favor, see I post a note, I have it. Motion is carry. The next section on the agenda are the reports of the superintendent. 8.1 is key performance indicators. Quarter four report. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I believe the committee has the report in your packet. This is the fourth quarter report from the end of the school year. I'm, as chief schools officer, I was responsible for producing this. So I'm still responsible and I'm happy to take your questions if you have any.
Any comments or questions by any of the school committee members? Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much. Just so I'm clear, on the academic and student achievement, right on page one, we're talking about the number of dropouts decreasing. So in quarter four last year, I'm just looking at this, from 28 down to 21. Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. So was there a difference in the overall population between those two years?
I don't have that to hand. I don't believe there was a significant difference in the population. I think I'd know if there were, but I don't have it to hand.
Okay. I just, I'm sorry. And then I was hoping you could explain for me the moving from the certificate of determination to a passing grade on Next Gen. I wasn't familiar with that. If you could describe that a little bit?
During the pandemic, the state relaxed the requirement for MCAS testing. And so students had the opportunity to earn a competency determination in place of their MCAS. So if they hadn't passed their math, ELA and science MCAS test, they could still graduate if they got, met this competency requirement. So it's sort of relaxing of the rules during the pandemic. That allowed for more kids to graduate more quickly because they didn't need to pass their MCAS test. So now those rules are being tightened up again and students are no longer eligible to receive a competency determination for math or ELA. You have to pass the test again. There was still a competency determination available for science this past year. But in other words, it's, it's become more stringent again to meet requirements for graduation. And so it's unfortunate that it also anticipated that that would make it more difficult for students to graduate.
Is the Next Gen test, was that a, like a replacement for MCAS?
It's just the next generation of MCAS. The newest version of it.
Okay. So that's a shift moving back to, okay. And then my only other question was on the diversity hiring. So I'm trying to, like 100%, I'm looking at 100% in '21, '22 for the fourth quarter, 75% in the fourth quarter for '21, for '22, '23. I'm trying to figure out what that's 100% and 75% of. I may have asked this question before, so.
You probably have. If I may, if I say, we are in the process, I met with the data team today. We're in the process of redesigning the KPI partly because it needs to be disaggregated in many cases. I think Ms. Thompson mentioned that before. We were committed to disaggregating. We're also committed to adding some new indicators around mental health. We're trying to work on things like that. If we, if we tell you that there were 25% of new hires, 25% were diverse candidates, well, that could be one person out of four. Or, you know, it could be 16 people out of 64. How do you know, right? So for the past quarter, it looks like, I'm going to defer to Dr. Hall. I can't interpret your writing, Dr. Hall, but...
It was six out of eight and I'm already ready at full admittance because Ms. Thompson's asked me this four straight times. So we were ready for the question. But I was unable to get what the 100% was. I believe that was three or four, but we weren't able to solidify last year's 100%. But this was six out of eight for 75%.
And that was just hires in the first, the fourth quarter?
In that quarter, yes.
So it's not a year-over-year comparison?
That ought to be a standard piece of the report and it will be in future.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Thompson?
So as you can probably suspect, I have a few. Towards the, I'll start with where Ms. Martin just left off. In what staff positions were those diversity hires? And what like levels of staffing?
Dr. Hall?
I don't have that level of detail with me right now, but I could send that to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. He's like, man, and I got her 75%. You were prepared with that 75%.
I actually do have it now. So I made a mistake, so. It appears that the, there were two student support staff positions, a substitute teacher position, a cook manager, a social worker, a teacher and a para in the group of eight. There was also a ninth individual that did not provide any information. So that's not included within the six of eight.
Okay, thank you. I was also looking at the substitute fill rate and I was just curious why that, why that decreased? If there's any thought to, because it went from 94%. It was just because we were using so many during the pandemic and it slowed down or, just curious about that?
The actual, I guess, numbers behind that didn't appear to be that significant. We did require more substitutes from looking at the data. I did look at that. It didn't seem to be caused by any particular factor that we could identify. But we do continue to have a lot of people interested in subs. We are starting the workshops up again and like I had reported, but we hadn't initially publicized. Every time, there's a regular scheduled school committee meeting, just so the public knows, there's a substitute workshop that day at 10 o'clock. So there'll be anywhere from 12 to 15 of them coming up in the next several months.
Excellent, thank you. My next question is under the family and community engagement section. And this may seem like a silly question, but the first bullet says "Community involvement in forums increased by over 1,300." Is that people or events?
That's people.
Okay. Thank you, because I was like, that's a lot of events. There were events, but I did not quite know. And the next bullet says "Language access saw decrease of over 2,500." Was that because of decreased need or availability?
That unfortunately was due to an error in the report that we discovered after report. So can I point you to, if you look at the table that says "Language access"?
Which page is that on?
It's on page five.
Okay.
It shows that last year in quarter four, 4,417 uses of the language access line and then 1,629 this quarter, right? So that's where the decrease is referring to. We just learned yesterday that the 4,417 number from last year, that was, we reported that in the fourth quarter, that it was, it was a cumulative number. The person who put that together had added how many times the language access line was used in the first quarter, second quarter, and in the fourth quarter they accumulated. So the two numbers are not, and they're the only numbers I'm aware of that are not accurate. Or the numbers themselves are accurate, but the fourth quarter from last year is not 4,400. That's a cumulative number. So, and so when we made this report, we genuinely were reporting to you that we had a big decrease, but it turns out it was not the case.
Okay. And I just have two more quick questions. On the, on page two, where it talks about, Ms. Martin mentioned this, the competency determination. I was just curious about when it says "Graduation on track with three MCAS competency determination." Does that number include people who have separated or what people would typically say dropped out? Or are those, those people taken out of the percentage number?
It's a good question. So I'd have to double check with the high school, but it makes sense that it includes all students enrolled in the high school. You can't just take, and so I'm really confident that it... You can't just take, and so I'm really confident that it includes all the students. You wouldn't be able to do that, take certain students out of the cohort.
Okay. And then my last question is on page three with the DESA information. So I was just curious, when you have these percentages, can we get, and I don't think in all instances we need this, but you just spoke to this, can we get the numbers, like the number of students that it represents, as opposed to the percentages? Because sometimes it's a little tricky, trying to estimate, you know, what 30% is of the class, or of a particular grade level that you might be assessing. So if we could, every once in a while, maybe every quarter, when we get these types of things, if we can get the actual numbers that the percentages represent, that'd be great.
I'm on page three, Ms. Thompson.
Yep, so on the bottom, where it says DESA, and you have like the, you know, the strength and the typical and the in-need section, you see here, there's all the percentages. If we could sometimes, maybe every quarter, get the actual numbers that those percentages denote, so we can have, I think, a more clear, and the public can have a more clear understanding of what the 30% is of, that'd be great.
Certainly.
Thank you. That's it.
Ms. Thompson, Mr. Rossi?
Yes, thank you. I was also curious in terms of the I-ready scores, the ELA I-ready, one through nine, math I-ready, one through nine, in the middle school. I'm pretty sure during the last meeting, I had asked if there was any way to disaggregate this data, so it's either by grade level in the district or by the school, and I'm just wondering if that could be possible as well? Just to really kind of see what's going on. Who's tier one, tier two, tier three in first grade, second grade, third grade, overall?
Certainly, as well, it's, we have the capacity to provide it to by grade level. We have great capacity now to deliver data to you, and we could, you know, it could be a very long KPI report in future, but I think we can find ways to give you a really solid summary around what you're asking for, and then with supplemental breakout aggregated data, or by grade level and so on as well. We can do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the superintendent report? Here, I need a motion to accept the report as report of progress by Ms. Chun, second by Mr. Lay, on favor of the I post in all the I's have it, motions carry. The next section on the agenda are the new business, nine point one, consideration of a draft cell phone policy for Lowell High School. Mr. Superintendent, you want to make a quick description of this before I open up to the floor for comments and questions?
Thank you. It's commonly known, I think, that cell phones are a serious issue in schools in general, particularly at the high school level. This is an issue that is, again, nationwide, it's probably worldwide, and there's definitely also at Lowell High School. Department of Education, DESI, is actually at the moment encouraging districts to, quote-unquote, "experiment" with different ideas around it, and there's even some funding available. Lowell High School is not, was not prompted by DESI. They were taking initiative on their own, but the point is that it's a very current issue to be addressed. And so a group of staff at Lowell High School began the discussion of, how can we, how can we have our students not be distracted by cell phones? How can we make it that kids have the opportunity to actually focus for a period of time without the distraction of their phones and so on? And what would a policy look like? They involved their colleagues, students, and so forth, and they came forward with the draft that you have in your packet. Mr. Fio and I have been talking about the draft, and we realized that it's a big deal. You can't just assume, well, yeah, go ahead, take their cell phones away. It's not simple, right? Kids are attached to those phones. Sometimes the parents might support the children having them. Sometimes the committee members may have different views. It might be more controversial than you might think. And so the idea was to share with the committee the thinking and the draft, and perhaps receive some feedback along the lines of, plow ahead and come back to us with this policy in your handbook for, you know, for next, next month, or slow down and consider these other, so it really was a point of sharing with you the draft and listening to any feedback you may have.
Any other, any comments or questions from the member? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that I now could see the policy on using the cell phone. I have gone to the high schools and talked to students, and I have seen them pull out their cell phone and use. So during the, say, study period, can they use a cell phone? I don't know, I don't, I don't expect you to have an answer for me right away, but.
I have an answer, Mr. Lay, of sorts. They have their cell phones out, many students do, in many classrooms, much of the day. They do. Some teachers are stricter than others. Some teachers remarkably have an incredible, you know, rapport with students and incredible set of expectations that the students not do that, but that's the exception, unfortunately. It's common for students to have their cell phones out in class.
So how are we going to make it consistent?
It's a great question. So the first part is like to have an understanding that we agree that this is the policy. Beyond what's in front of you, even if we enacted it, right? There's this whole thing about like, okay, are you guys really going to be able to implement this policy, right? That is a big, big question. So we've been talking with the high school about, to what extent are the staff on board with this? To what extent are the staff prepared? To what extent have you thought through, what happens when some students disobey the policy? Like, have you really thought that through? And so the high school has, and still is, working with staff, and we believe that there is a sort of, you know, a critical mass of support for this kind of policy. And regardless, you know, it seems like we must do something. It can't be okay for students to have their cell phones out in class and be distracted from the lesson. We're not doing the students any, any, any good in that sense.
I just want to add also, what I've learned from, from talking to students are that sometimes they may pull out their cell phone for research purpose. However, cell phone could also be used for cheating when they send each other's answer, so something that.
The cell phones can be used for lots of harm. They can, students can text each other. If you skip out of class to the bathroom, I'll do the same, and I'll meet you there, and all sorts of mischievous, you know, and problems. But just the distraction alone is really, it's counter to education, right? It's counter to our mission and our purpose, and so we want to do something about it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, myself and I believe Ms. Del Rossi, and I think there was another committee member, we sat in with the students, two were working on this draft with, with the high school. This is not what they were proposing at the time, so I'm not sure where it left off. But my first thought is, this should be a district-wide policy if it's going to be a policy. I don't think it should just be a high school thing, because as we know, by looking at the statistics, the numbers of bullying has really escalated in the middle school. And so I think that that's the first thing that I would say about this. Looking at just, I think it's the second section where it says prohibited cell phone, I believe it should read no, no cell phone usage, not no cell phones in the classroom, because they're allowed to bring them in and then potentially store them according to that particular plan. A couple paragraphs underneath it says, "Any student who repeatedly violates the cell phone policy." Well, what is repeated? Is that two? Is that three? Is that four times? I think everything needs to be clearly spelled out so that there's no, you know, any, any leeway for somebody to not say that they didn't know. So if it's automatically three, you've been told three times, then this is the repercussion. I think that's important. But I also think back to two things. You know, as you guys know, my mother was a teacher for 45 years, but this is a very different school than, that, school time that we're living in. And, you know, we've, we've seen, and thankfully Lowell has not had any of these situations, but we've seen how these have helped to save lives in really scary situations. And I know that some of our students, in talking and speaking with them, they were really concerned about being separated for the fear of something that could happen. I will tell you, I do not leave my office without my cell phone in case, right? That's just the way that I've started to live my life. So, you know, just, I get it that there needs to be something done. I don't know if it needs to be something to this degree. I think that there does need to be a this and then, you know, this is the rule if this is not done then. But, you know, again, there's also a portion in here where it says that the school's not going to maintain any responsibility if something happens. We've all seen some of the things that have happened, the pipes bursting, like, you know, things that we're not expecting happening, and then what? Then we don't have liability. So there's just a lot of, I think, things that just need to be shored up in this. But again, for me, the biggest glaring thing that was that this was a high school thing as opposed to a district-wide thing. And I think we need to kind of go back to really speak to the students about their whys. It's, it's, we have to, we have to look at the greatness of our students as opposed to the few who might be misusing it, as opposed to, you know, the people who may be using it for, for the proper reasons. Thank you.
Mr. Rossi?
I was going to say, pretty much similar. I mean, we, to what Ms. Thompson said, we live in a very different generation. When I went to school, cell phones did not exist, and we all survived, right? But our kids today see a very different world that's on TV, that's on the news, and tragically, it's not good stuff. And parents have a distrust for the administration overall because of various situations over time. So their direct connect is often to their child, their student. So to take that chain of custody out of the student's hand that the parent is paying for, that phone, I think the district really needs to look at the policies overall and how it affects it, because parents aren't happy about this. I've talked to many parents in the community about this. They don't want their child to give up their phone, because they want that direct access, direct access to their child. And I honestly can say, putting myself in that position as a parent of a student who's going to go to the high school, my, my son literally texts me from the bathroom if he's uncomfortable. You know, it's just a different society today than it is in the 1990s or the early 2000s, and it's become reliant on the cell phone. And I'm not saying it's right in any way, shape, or form, but it has become that direct connect and evidence in courtrooms for tragic situations that, that have happened. And we, if we were to pass this without being cognizant of all of these factors, we would not be responsible. So that's all I wanted to input. Thank you.
Ms. Chun?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only question is, with the photography and videography, that's not prohibited, prohibited on school ground, so when they're asking for our students to have prior permission, what are the timeline, or what are the timeframe that you ask them to ask for permission? For example, there are some people who uses their phone to take pictures for notes, because I personally do that when I couldn't keep up with the notes. I would take a picture and then I'll refer back to the picture that I take. So, and what are the timeline that we can, our kids ask for permission to use their camera to take pictures of notes and stuff like that?
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I think there's two parts to it. One is that we could make an argument, I was wondering if Mr. Lay was going there, to say that the cell phones could be very useful in class, and students can look things up and so on, right? But we have so much technology now. Every student has a Chromebook or laptop right, right in their class, and they can do all sorts with that, and they can access their account on their cell phone at home and so forth, right? We can make provisions for children, students to take copies of their notes, or to take a snapshot, or whatever it is that they need to, without necessarily having them use their cell phones. It's also possible that the teacher could say at the end of class, "Everybody grab your cell phone and take a snap of whatever you need to bring home tonight." You know, we can accommodate, I think. We just don't want to have students be distracted right through a lesson. It's just really difficult for, for teachers to keep students' attention. It, yeah. Can, may I, I could respond to a couple of other points. Ms. Thompson, you raised a point about this being, it could be policy right through. I couldn't agree more, right? And I've spoken a lot about collaboration. It's great to talk about an initiative that came from the school, and the school's staff are looking for this, right? But also, the middle school and elementary folks, particularly the middle school, I think that it's important for, but they've not been involved in this particular one. And so while I do agree it should roll down to the earlier grade levels, right now, this came from Lowell High School, and Lowell High does have its own separate handbook, so it was meant for Lowell High, and I'd be happy to introduce it to middle school principals and recommend it and implement it if that's what you choose to do. Last point, I think, has to do with safety issues. Students would have access to their phones in the classroom in an emergency, you know, if a kid had a need that they actually had to reach their parent and so on, the phone is going to be right there, right? The idea is just to collect them so the child's not distracted by it during the lesson. If this, you know, and I'm not answering today, like, well, what if there's a lockdown? Or what if a pipe bursts and there's a flood? We haven't thought of every scenario, but the cell phones are not locked away in a safe at the, in the main office. They're in the classroom, and students can access them if there was a need.
Your side, Ms. Chun? Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much. You know, I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate that this is kind of an ongoing, you know, determination. As I was comparing the kind of two policies, I mean, it seems to me the main change in this is the, you know, that as students come into a classroom, they'll be putting their, their cell phone, you know, in a, what, a box, wherever it goes. The biggest concerns I have around that are, A, if we put this in a policy, then it needs, then it needs to be implemented in every single classroom. Is that a realistic expectation? And, and, you know, that's something that I think, you know, the staff, high school, middle school, as we involve all the, all the staff, that I'd want to hear more about, you know, that there would be that kind of commitment. You know, my, my personal approach would be, until there's a problem, you know, I would think that students could be, you know, if a student had their, their phone, they were respectful, it was in their bag, it was not, you know, being used inappropriately, then going through the mechanics of collecting it and giving it back, and collecting it in the next class and giving it back, seems like it, you know, could be a bit of a challenge. And is that really the best, the best use of time? And are we just creating something that's just going to lead to a lot of infractions that, you know, maybe, maybe aren't the biggest deal? But to, I think, kind of the, the point you're making, I would really want to hear from, from the school, from the administration, from, from frontline teachers, and give parents an opportunity too. I mean, this is, would be a perfect opportunity for a subcommittee to bring this forward, get some input. You know, I would be open to kind of those, those opinions, because I think what I, what I really want to make sure we do is that we make this a real-world policy, that it's something that we can actually implement, that will actually have an impact, but doesn't go so far in kind of, you know, locking up, locking up every phone and turn it into kind of this self-fulfilling, you know, churn of activity that doesn't necessarily accomplish much. So that would be my, my recommendation, just in terms of whether it goes to a subcommittee, I don't know, policy, whichever one we feel is most appropriate, to have kind of an opportunity for both staff, students, and, and parents to have some public way of weighing in on it.
Thank you.
Ms. Mon, do you want to make that into a form of motion? You want to do that? Okay. Okay, motion by Ms. Mon, second by, by Ms. Thompson. Before we take a vote on that, we'll just complete the discussion. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. As chair of policy, I think that's a great idea. I, I bring this, like, several different perspectives on this. First of all, it's absolutely a distraction, and it's rude. I mean, we see it here. People have their phones on when people are talking. They're not paying attention. The teacher's trying to teach. You shouldn't be looking at your phone. I also have the perspective of 15 years ago, my son had his phone out at Lowell High in the hall, and I got a call. And I got a call at work because the security guard confiscated it. And I had to go to the high school and get his phone because at that time, the policy was you couldn't have your phone. Never mind have it out in class. You couldn't have it in the hall, you couldn't have it in the cafeteria. I was quite annoyed with him that he had his phone out and I had to leave work early and go downtown and get his phone back for him. And his explanation, I was just looking at the time, trying to get to my next class, right? So the other thing that come, and I think that this idea of you can have your phone with you, it is a safety issue. We lived through nine eleven. You know, I had an elementary student at that time. You know, what's going on, right? You need the phone. You feel that, safety for your child, that they have their phone. But they should not have their phone out when they're in class. Why isn't that being followed now? And it makes me think of when we used to say, every student, every staff person has to have an identification badge on them at the high school. Oh, well, you know, you're gonna, you know that broken window theory? You got one broken window, nobody gets ignored, the neighborhood falls apart, right? So I think the cellphone policy needs to be enforced, strengthened. I don't remember, nowhere in this report does it talk about what our language is regarding the policy district-wide. So to Ms. Thompson's point, I agree. This might be specific to the high school, but we need to like revisit that policy overall and make it realistic. The idea of collecting the phones, all I think about is the time involved. Collecting them, giving them back, no, that's mine, no, that's yours. You know, it's a nightmare. We already don't have enough time between classes. So I, I want to hear the high school's perspective. I want to hear from students. I want to hear from parents. Bottom line is, we need enforcement. And that's going to require teacher buy-in and consistency across classrooms. This team seems much harder to me to say to every teacher, teachers who perhaps look the other way because they're not into classroom management or they really aren't paying attention that some kid in the back has got ear things on and he's watching a video during your geometry class or whatever. Right? Right. I, I mean, this idea of saying to the teacher that doesn't say, you know, Johnny, put your phone away or I'm gonna take it, right? It doesn't do that, is now going to collect the phones? I, I have some, it's a stretch of credibility here, but I think we do need to reinforce. I, I, I want to start with what's already on the books, not just the high school handbook. What do we have on policy? Because as I said, fifteen years ago, you couldn't even have a phone out. And I believe it was the same when my kids were in middle school. You could not have a phone. And I remember saying to, same son, I'm giving you a phone. It's for when you're walking back. I mean, I think he got it while he was in the fifth grade. I said, it's for making sure you're safe walking back and forth to school. It will not be out in school. Or if the teacher doesn't take it, I'm gonna take it.
Ms. Dory, if all parents took that attitude, we wouldn't be having this situation.
You wouldn't be having the, well, when they get into high school, the control lessons, you know that, right? You need to set the bar at the standard of enforcement at the high school. I believe at the high school now, you walk the halls and you see everybody has a badge. The staff wear them, the students wear them. We came up with a, a policy, you know, you get your picture taken on whatever, you know, the first day of school or whatever you do. We can do the same with the cellphone. Whether we have to collect them and redistribute them, that I'm not so sure. But I think it does have to go through the policy. I would recommend the policy subcommittee because it does involve a longer conversation. And I think that it behooves the administration at the high school to get the message out, starting with the new school year. This is what we're going to be doing. That would be, um, my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Everyone has had a chance to speak on this already, um, given the, the timeframe that we have. Before I ask, uh, for, for the vote, um, just make a quick comment. Everybody here agreed that, uh, we live in different times. I know that when we all in school against the biggest worries the teacher had and disciplining us was take away the paper airplane, right? So, you know, now, now we're dealing, we're entirely, um, uh, you know, different age, different, uh, world. And I think we all agree from what I heard from everybody that we need to have a policy in place, but I think it has to go through the process of opening to the public, hear the opinions from, uh, teacher, staff, parents, and even students themselves if they choose to, uh, come to the policy subcommittee meeting. With that said, we did have a, a second on the, um, referring to the policy subcommittee. On favor, say aye. We're going to do a voice vote. On favors, aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carry. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, I believe, nine point two. The revision of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school calendar. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I'd like to refer to Ms. Desmond on this item. Ms. Desmond?
Sure. Uh, so a calendar was presented back in March through the, uh, Superintendent Boyd. Uh, at that time, it was anticipated that there would be two professional development days similar to last year's calendar, um, to occur at the beginning of the school year. My understanding is that that, um, did not end up, um, being negotiated in, um, discussions with, uh, our union partners. And so this calendar is, uh, the standard calendar without those two professional development days. You may recall that, um, the original professional development days were, um, an additional one prior to the start of the school year and then a second on the primary election day of September fifth. That's what was anticipated in, um, March. It doesn't appear that there will be a primary day on March, on, uh, September fifth, so that would be a standard school day now. And, um, there will only be one, uh, orientation day for staff prior to students returning in, uh, August.
Ms. Dory?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Before I make a motion to, uh, approve the revised calendar, I, I am compelled to say, uh, this is the same union that brought forward negotiations that I thought we were doing in confidence and kind of railroaded several of my members into supporting, um, a one-year extension that basically got us nothing. Added base of twenty-five hundred, all the other two percent, whatever the other increases were that added up to millions of dollars. We are losing here. We're losing an opportunity to provide professional development for our staff, uh, one day even because we're not going to have the primary. But I, I think that's wrong. But I am going to move to revise the calendar since that are the constraints, those are the constraints we're under. Thank you.
Yes, so would the day before school professional development not happen? So August twenty-eighth, I, I believe, the orientation? Staff return to school for staff orientation, would that not be a professional development day? Or because I thought it was the day before school and the primary election day?
That's correct. So the, if you want to think about it as a traditional calendar, so the traditionals, the, the teachers come for a day before the students to have an orientation day and then the next day the students arrive and that's what, that's the kind of calendar we're going to. There's no professional development day.
Right, but that, that's what I thought that we had said, the day before school starts and then... Because in my experience, every time we go to school before the kids in low public schools, we're just setting up our classrooms. There's no professional development. There hasn't been ever, so, Ms. Desmond?
Through Mr. Superintendent, Ms. Desmond, you have something to add?
Ms. Desmond?
Sure. Uh, so the, the union, um, the UTL contract for teachers i- is specific that the Monday before, uh, students return, there is an orientation day. Uh, so that is, that is standard language and, um, to your point, uh, depending on the building, some days that is, that some, some buildings use as a full day of PD and other buildings sometimes, uh, have a mix where teachers are able to, you know, meet in their teacher teams or work within their classroom. But that is, it's actually contractual language, um, within the existing contract that teachers return the Monday before the students return.
Mr. Rossi, go ahead.
And I just also wanted to add that we've received multiple emails about the last day of school being a half-day of school, which I don't think is a bad idea, but I don't, I don't know who to speak to about that or how that goes, but, I mean, uh...
My first thought on that is that we've not had an opportunity to get feedback from the schools, from the principals and so on. I don't know, I don't, I don't think there would be major pushback. Um, it might even be appreciated, but I, I, I don't want to speculate how people would feel about it. Willing to take, if the committee feels strongly about it and, and you vote, we, we'll follow your direction.
Could I make a motion then to vote for the last day of school to be a half-day of school?
Uh, Mr. Rossi, if maybe, uh, if you want to make a motion on the floor to, um, the superintendent's administration to explore the possibility of having a half-day, uh, to be, to take away with it altogether? Is that what you want, just not to have a half-day at all?
Just have a half-day instead of a full day of school.
Just to have a half-day. Motion by Mr. Rossi. Was that something that, Mrs. Superintendent, was that something that in the purview that, uh, the motion?
Yes, thank you very much. I think we'd welcome the opportunity to explore that option.
Okay. Second by, do you have a second? By Ms. Thompson. On favors, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carry. Uh, we have, Mr. Lay, do you have any comment on the...
I just have a very quick question. On New Year's, New Year's Eve is on Sunday. I don't know why you put on the calendar, but anyway.
Ms. Desmond?
So again, it's, our union partners have language within their contracts that if, depending on the, um, union, uh, if you're a full-time employee and a, 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 a holiday falls on a Sunday, there's a certain day that you have off. So we do have to note the, the holidays that are negotiated with all of our unions and then, um, identify when that day is that they actually get for the holiday.
No other comment? Uh, motion by, uh, Ms. Dory to approve the revised...
I have a question.
Yeah, question, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, and it's a quick question. So I asked then Chief of Schools, um, Mr. Skinner, about having, um, a scholarship night on the calendar. It was a motion that I made. So I'm not sure if there's a separate events calendar that the parents all get access to, but I, it needs to be somewhere where it's visible. So I'm not quite sure where that would go on what type of calendar, but I wanted it to be the night where everybody could find out about attending scholarships because we, we missed that opportunity this year. And there was a, a whole night of people being, having, having access to scholarships and things like that. So I want to make sure to have that on the calendar and it was made as a motion, so I'm not sure if there's a separate calendar or if it would go on this calendar.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I recall that discussion. I won't be able to say this for very long. I wasn't the superintendent when that motion was made and so I don't know what became of it. I don't, I mean, it, it may have been acted on and I'm, and I might just be unaware. I'll explore it and report back if you're okay with that.
Yeah. So a motion to approve the revised, uh, calendar by Ms. Dory, second by Ms. Maun. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
The, the next line item is nine point three, uh, fiscal year twenty-three budget transfer, but I was informed that is, is withdrawn. We now go to item nine point four, fiscal year twenty-four budget, uh, transfer. Through Mr. Superintendent, uh, Ms. CFO.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
This is a simple transfer to fund transportation's, um, routing software.
Any comments or question by the, uh, any of the committee members? Here none. Madam Secretary, roll call, please. Need a motion by, uh, Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Chuen. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Ms. Lay? Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We have already taken item nine point five through nine point nine already. Uh, we are now, uh, taking up line item nine point ten. The election of secretary. Uh, need a motion to approve interim Superintendent Skinner as Secretary of the Lowell School Committee by Ms. Dory, second by Mr. Lay. Any comments or questions on this before we take a roll call? Here none. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Ms. Lay? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Seven yeas.
The next line item is nine point eleven. Need a motion to appoint interim Superintendent Skinner as representative to the credit board by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Maun. Any discussion or questions on this before we do roll call? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson? Seven yeas approved.
Uh, we are going to adjourn after this. Any announcement from any of the committee members? No, no, it's just a quick announce.
I have one, sorry.
Ms. Thompson?
Colombian Independence Flag Day is Thursday, which is tomorrow. So please come by and celebrate. I will be singing the national anthem, so feel free to join.
That's wonderful. Uh, just a quick announcement myself. The, uh, the Lowell Folk Festival is next week. It's, uh, next Friday. It's going to be very exciting and, uh, please come and join the Folk Festival. If you would like to volunteer, please contact the, uh, the National Park. With that, need a motion to adjourn by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Chun.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have one more.
One more announcement?
My mother's birthday is Friday. Happy birthday, Mom.
I said, Mrs. Thompson as well? Uh, happy, happy birthday to Mrs. Thompson. Need a motion, we, need a motion to adjourn? Now, we did the two separate meetings, adjourned regular meeting that were, we had a resource from the executive session earlier. I think I forgot who's the first, uh, Mr. Rossi and Ms. Chun, second that. On favors, aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carry.